Let's get started. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. It is 6:30 PM. This is the time and place for the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors. I do call this meeting to order. Director Klein.
Would you all please join me with the flag suit? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the liberty, the power, and the justice hands on the nation, on ground, in the visible, liberty, and justice. A brief moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin, if we do not have a board meeting next month, this is the last roll call, I think I may be asking from you. Maybe please have a roll call.
Kreiser, present. Moyer.
Here.
Fowler.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Blau, here. Murray, here. Klein.
Here.
England.
Present.
Nom.
Present.
All members present.
Great, thank you. We'll move now to the adoption of this evening's agenda. The agenda has been published, and everyone is at an opportunity to review it. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Thank you. Is there a second? Great, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving this evening's agenda, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, presentations for this evening. It looks like we do have student council rep. Come on up. Yeah, yeah.
Hi, my name is Max. I am next year, 2024 to 2025, school board rep. I'm here to fill for Carter's absence today. I would just like to discuss that we have field day on Thursday during our half day, which we might have to move inside due to possible thunderstorms. Homecoming theme for next year is Night in Paris, and homecoming is also super early next year. It's September 21st, and normally we have it in October. Sorry. We are bringing back Powderpuff, which is October 17th, which students seem really excited about. So we're also super excited to get that done. Tailgate is August 28th with Parents Night, and our president for 2024 to 2025 is Nathan, and he's chairing the event. And also, 95 of the student body wants to have the bonfire after our homecoming game. But there seems to be some people that want to have it after the field hockey game, Thursday night before. And I just wanted to bring up the fact that there's just some back and forth with deciding what we wanted to do. So I just wanted to bring it up that it's not an official thing yet. We don't know which is going to be, but we're figuring it out. And that's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you, Max. Great report. Appreciate it. We'll be looking forward to having you next year. Very good. Yeah. Okay, superintendent's report. Dr. Messinger.
Okay, a couple of things. First of all, up here, you can look at it afterwards. Our students with Mr. Berdenka have been working on a sign for the field house. Currently, we did have a sign waiver approved, and we wanted to have something that was student-designed and student-made as much as possible. And this was the design that they had come up with. I'll leave it up here. This is just obviously a mock-up. It'll be much larger, and it will go between the two locker room entrances that would be down there, as well as there will be a female Viking and a male Viking down there as well. So I'll leave it here. If you want to look at it after the meeting, you can certainly take a closer look. Also on display for the next 30 days will be a German textbook. Amy Hoek has them in the office. If you want to take a look at the German textbook, that's a textbook that the department, which is a department of one, is recommending for that to move forward with our new textbook for German. We did have one more bullying, mental health discussion about a week ago. Some good discussion. Some of the cellphone information that was sent out to the board had come up. We had some lengthy discussions about that. Got to hear from Ethan Hughes and a little bit more about the Club of Eden that's being started and where they are, and then talked about potentially kind of separating into secondary and elementary to have some discussions at both levels for next year. So that's where we ended on that. And the other thing, and I don't know if you guys are aware, but graduation is tomorrow. I will send the board some details about where to meet and where we're going to go. I'm going to wait till the morning. I may have to send you two different instructions. We're hoping there's more clarity on the weather tomorrow morning when we look, but there probably won't be. So we'll give you the whole picture if not. We usually meet ahead of time. Stacy is really, really good at doing the hoods.
I've got it down now.
So if you have trouble with your hoods, she could do that. And we will then proceed down to graduation and be ready for that. There's several, I think, different options tomorrow, obviously outside. We do have it set up inside, and we'll be ready for that. There's also an option, if we see that the thunderstorms are coming a little later, to potentially slide it up a little bit. And we'll obviously market it using our autodiler, our social media, if we have any changes. But I'm hoping we wake up and things change a little bit, and we can have it on time outside. So that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Messinger. Is there any old business for this evening? Hearing none. We will move now to public comment. We did inform the public that anyone wishing to speak this evening should register their intent to provide public comment by 3 o'clock this afternoon. We did have indications of two members of the public that were interested in addressing the board. I do not believe either is here. I know that Raymond Marlowe is not here. Charlotte Engel is not here as well. So we will hold that in the event that public comment may arrive later. But it doesn't look like, at this point, we do have any public comment. Okay, so we will move then to our items for board action. This is items eight through 13 on the agenda. I would note that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the president, the following action requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an aye or yes. All votes opposed shall be stated with a nay or no. All members abstaining shall state "I abstain" when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as unanimous roll call vote unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. I'll also note that typically, our first board meeting of the month is a committee meeting, but this is a voting meeting. So all of the items on this evening's agenda will be up for vote this evening. Okay, we will start then with item eight, starting with 8.1, Dr. Messinger.
8.1 is our approval of minutes. 8.2 is our student activity count, and 8.3 is our cash disbursements.
Okay. Is there any questions regarding items 8.1 through 8.3 from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.3?
Motion to approve 8.1 through 8.3.
Great, thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Director Williams. Any discussion on those items? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving items 8.1 through 8.3, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote is also a yes, so motion carries unanimously. We'll move now to items of probable discussion this evening, and that's budget and finance.
The first one is the table discussion on school lunch prices. Because it was tabled, it was brought back for this month based on discussions. We're kind of assuming it'll be voted down, but as a formality, it's on here to vote on because we never did that.
Okay, so thank you, Dr. Messinger. So this is a vote to approve the recommended increase in the lunch prices that was tabled from last month. So any questions before we take a motion for Dr. Messinger for Leanne? Okay, I'll receive a motion to adopt item 9.1.
Motion to adopt 9.1.
Great, thank you, Director Blau. Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Director Fowler. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Director Williams.
I am adamantly opposed to raising the school price launches. There's no need for it. I think, I think after my discussions, I had the opportunity to get a little bit of an education on the school lunch program and how it all works. And we can easily keep the lunch prices as they are for this year. And in fact, I would actually, part of my discussion included, how can we provide more relief to parents in a very stressful financial time for most families? And one way to do that is to offer free lunches. And to do that, however, it would cost the school district roughly $150,000 for one year to provide free lunches. I know that's a lot of money, but given the discussion that we're going to have next, it could have a dramatic effect on some families as far as make it get more affordable, provide food to the children. So whether or not we talk about that, whether or not it even goes through, I don't know. But that was just an idea that I had after the discussion I had with Leanne. And, but I'm absolutely opposed to raising the school lunch prices.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams. Anyone else? Okay, I would just offer a counter. My comment is that I have a concern by not raising school lunch prices that we are limiting and hamstringing our ability to purchase high-quality food. Currently, we do provide a nutritious lunch, but as long as we keep our budget low on school prices, we are also limited in our ability to purchase better food for our students. That's an initial concern that I have. If we continue to do with school prices, school lunch prices, what we do now, we will always be offering what we offer now. So that is one concern that I have. Second concern that I have is what we discussed last month about not taking any increase where the federal government recommends that we do. I do think we expose ourselves to risk under an audit. If the federal government were to audit our program, or the state were, we do expose ourselves to some risk by not taking their recommendations. So those are my two concerns. The other thought that I have is, and I agree, Director Williams, anything that we can do to lessen an impact on families is great. I also view this charge as a bypassable charge. It's a fully bypassable charge by families. If a family does not want to pay that price, they have options that they do not have to pay that price. So now, I know that that doesn't address every family. Every family is different. But those are just some initial thoughts that I had. I think it's a moderate increase, and so I think, as far as that's concerned, viewing the risks that I see, I think it is worth the risk and knowing that families can bypass it. I think it's not an overly burdensome increase, but I do appreciate the statement. I also recognize that the work has been done, and I appreciate that, taking a look at the numbers. I don't think free lunches is something that we can afford to do, but I do appreciate the comments thus far. So, okay. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. Is the increase that's proposed for the share in line with what we've increased it in previous years?
Yes, we've increased five cents, 10 cents, and I think three or four years ago, we didn't increase at all. And then we also had the COVID years where everyone was free for two full years. So we've never done a massive, like, 25 cent increase or anything like that since I've been here. These are in line. We have lunch prices, I believe I shared them, maybe not, but with other schools, we are in line with what else is going on in the county, and they are also increasing as well.
Leanne, can you speak to, are there any other districts that you're aware of who have not taken the increase when it's been recommended?
I don't know about that, that they haven't taken it when it's been recommended. I mean, Lebanon is in a different camp than us, so all their students get free lunch. They're all direct cert.
Okay.
So, but I can't speak to that, sorry.
No, no, I should have asked you beforehand.
Okay, any other discussion?
If I can just make one more quick comment, but in the meeting that I had, it was expressed to me that the risk that you talked about would be very minimal at best. That there would be no really major repercussions to the district if we should not take the recommendation and raise the prices.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, with comments now ended, we'll take a vote. I think what I'll do is I will take a voice vote. If we need to do a roll call afterwards, I'll do so. Again, remember that this is a vote to approve the price increase for the school lunches. And so, all in favor of approving the increase on school lunches, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye.
Yes? All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, Mrs. Martin, may I please have a roll call?
Kreiser?
Yes.
Moyer?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Blau?
No.
I mean, I didn't hear that?
No.
Murray?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Nom?
Yes.
These six yes and three no. Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will move now to 9.2. This is the final budget for 2024-25.
I don't know that I can say anything else about that.
Okay, so this is, again, a follow-up from last month. Last month, the board tentatively approved a budget based upon a tax increase that would levy a 17.3467 mil tax on real estate under the authority of Section 672 of the Pennsylvania School Code. That is a budget that is based upon a 6.5% budget or increase to the local property taxes. And this also includes the setting of the per capita tax under the authority of Section 679 of the School Code to $0.00 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the budget as tentatively approved in June?
Motion to approve the budget, 9.2.
Thank you, Director Williams. Is there a second? Thank you, Director England. Okay, discussion.
I have a question. Being, is the, moving the per capita tax to zero, is that going to be passed via resolution to the board?
Yes.
Yeah, so these two items are together presented.
Yeah, correct. It is a single motion to approve two things, unless there's a motion to separate the issues.
I would like to make a motion to separate them. If we can.
Just pardon me. I mean, you can if you want, but no matter what, no matter where you set it, if you set it at one, if you set it at zero, if you set it at, we can continue with the per capita as is, as a zero.
Right, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. I would just like to make a motion to separate the two items.
So we have a motion on the table right now to approve the budget as directed. We have now received a motion to separate the issues. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, second is on the motion to separate the issues. Is there discussion on that question?
I really don't see the need to have to separate the two. Why would we need to do that?
Okay. I'll defer to Director Kreiser.
Well, because certain board members may want to vote separately on each individual item.
I see, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of, no, I think what we'll do here is we'll take a roll call vote on the motion to separate the per capita tax question from the question of the overall budget. Mrs. Martin?
Moyer?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Williams?
No.
Blau?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
England?
No.
Nom?
No.
Kreiser?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries by my count, five to four. Okay, so we will separate those two issues for voting. We will refer to the budget as item 9.2A, and we will refer to the per capita tax as 9.2B. Okay, so moving to 9.2A, the motion is still on the table to approve the budget as tentatively adopted in June. Is there any other discussion on that motion?
I have a comment, if I could.
Yep.
I, like many people, do not like when taxes are increased, especially during a time in where living expenses have also increased. So to vote for a 6.5% increase in taxes for a second consecutive year is a very difficult decision. It's certainly one that I do not take lightly. I'd love to be able to pass a budget with a 0% tax increase. Unfortunately, it is not a realistic option, as it would place the school district into an unsustainable position. If such a budget were to pass tonight, according to the 10-year projection models that we've been looking at, the district would face a major deficit within two to three years, and would then be forced to significantly raise taxes just to break even. The board could opt to approve other tax increases, whether it be 5.5 or 5.9, whatever it may be. However, the 10-year projections, again, that we have been reviewing, reflect that if the board adopted such a proposal, it would bring down the fund balance to a less-than-desirable number. With a 6.5% increase, you're looking at roughly an average of $196 increase per year to a family. If you did 5.9%, you're looking at $181 of an increase at an average per family. That's $15. Does $15 really, I mean, does that really save a whole lot of money for families when you look at the number-wise? Yeah, on paper, 5.9% looks better than 6.5%, but financially, does it really make a big difference? I don't know. I understand that the school district's goal is not to make money. However, the school district and its board has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, to the community it serves, and to its students. The district must be able to pay its obligations and provide the necessary resources to educate its students. A school district in our region once sat in the same position that our district is in today. That district chose not to raise taxes and used its healthy fund balance to fund expenses over its operating budget. Today, that district finds itself with a negative fund balance. I do not want our district to suffer this same fate. An underlying factor to the 10-year projections and whether or not the board should approve a 6.5% increase for the 24-25 school year relates to the variable index. For the 23-24 school year, that's about the end, the board took advantage of the fact that the district qualified for the higher tax base or index based on its special education needs and services. For the 24-25 school year, the state sets 6.5% as the maximum index. Now, granted, this does not mean that the school district has to raise taxes at the highest amount. I get it. However, to do so now will benefit the district in many ways. The variable index is named as such because it changes from year to year. And with the information that is available to the board now, it is more likely that the index is going to decrease rather than increase in future years. With the added expense of bond payments for the recent capital projects, raising taxes at the index amount for this school year sets up the district to meet those added expenses without having to deplete its fund balance. It also sets up the board with the ability to approve lower tax increases moving forward and continued with a downward trend in any other tax increases over the next 10 years. Finally, since the index is a variable rate and is likely to reduce during the foreseeable future, we may have to adjust our projected tax rigs, which could then have an adverse effect on our overall fund balance. Knowing what we know now, it would be advantageous to the district to proceed with this proposed 6.5% increase now so that we are in a better financial situation should the unexpected happen in the future. Comments have been made related to the recent construction projects within the district. Consolidating the elementary schools into one saves the district money. The previous four buildings are aging and are unequally used, with one building filled to capacity and the others having room to spare. Staff and subsequent salaries were reduced through attrition, mainly through retirements, thus saving the district more money. Additionally, the district managed to receive the full appraised value for each of the four buildings, and those funds are going to be used to help us pay down these bonds that we have coming due. Other comments have been made regarding the secondary school renovations, most of which questioned the need for a new gym. I get it. That's the only thing that people see when they drive by or come and pick up their students or drop them off. They see a new gym being built, more athletic facilities. Why does the district need more athletic facilities? Well, what most people don't know is that almost half of this total renovation cost is simply to replace or upgrade the HVAC system in the building. $20 million to put in a new HVAC system. That's half the budget. People don't see the HVAC system. They feel it, but they don't see it. But that's something that most people, I'm sure, are not aware of. Additionally, there are improvements and upgrades are also being made to the auditorium, to the band and choral rooms, to the trades rooms, and also to a new multimedia studio. So the renovation is therefore not just about athletics, rather, it is addressing many needs that have been neglected for decades and to enhance multiple learning environments for our students. Questions and comments have been submitted, again, relating to cutting expenses. Can we cut expenses instead of raising taxes? The short answer is no. We cannot cut enough expenses that would take the place of funds generated through raising taxes, regardless of what rate we use. To put our budget in perspective, when compared to 40 other Pennsylvania school districts with similar student enrollment, Northern Lebanon ranks as the 16th lowest out of those 40 schools as far as an annual budget. The average budget for those 40 schools is $45.5 million. Northern Lebanon stands at $44.9 under that average. Northern Lebanon already runs on a bare-bones budget. Close to 85% of our expenses are fixed expenses, expenses like salaries and benefits that are negotiated for multiple years that include raises for teachers and staff, and thus, the need to consistently increase revenue is required. In order to cut enough expenses, we would have to eliminate teaching, administration, and staff positions. Then the question becomes, which positions get eliminated? Which programs get cut? And how do we answer those questions without causing any detriment to the students? Quite frankly, it will be the students that suffer the most should we head down that path. While I'm not excited about another 6.5% increase, it is the best option for the financial stability of the district. One group of people that this kind of increase will greatly impact are the seniors. I get it. Those families and individuals that are now retired and living on fixed income. I do not like placing this kind of burden upon this vulnerable population. But Northern Lebanon will still have the lowest military in the county, no matter what is decided here tonight. Additionally, this kind of increase will greatly affect those families already struggling to make ends meet due to the rise of living expenses over the last few years. My family is one of those families. So I empathize and I feel with those families. So I empathize and I feel with those families that are, that have voiced their opinions related to this budget and potential tax increase. Again, I'm not excited about an increase in taxes. I am excited, however, for the future of this district. Even though overall test scores are not where we want them to be, they have been improving over the past few years. Again, people don't understand that. They just look at the low numbers, but they don't look at the progress, the positive progress that's being made within our schools. Progress is being made, and I see nothing but a bright future for this district, our students, and our communities. If we truly want our students to be successful, if we really want to see those scores rise, we must be willing to invest in them. Investment means sacrifice. Until our legislature in Harrisburg get their act together and make the required changes to publication, the public education and how it's funded, the majority of the financial burden falls upon the local real estate owners, plain and simple. I understand and empathize with those opposed to, or who might be on the fence with this proposed increase. But it is the best decision and investment we can make for our school and for our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams. Further comment?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say something real quick.
Yes.
Just if you look at the past five years, how the tax increase has always raised, and we, the last two.
Can I make sure that you're?
It's on.
Okay.
The last two years, it's been at the, the top of what we could possibly vote for, and it's hard to say, looking at past history, that all of a sudden we're gonna start not going to the top that we can ab, absolutely vote for. And I'm not a senior, but I, I've came to this community in two thousand nineteen as a renter, and between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand twenty-three, if you want to give an example, my rent went up by five hundred dollars a month. So it's not just always a couple dollars here or there, or it's, you don't realize how much it impacts is on the renters when property managers raise your rent. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Further comment?
Sure. I appreciate all those who have reached out to me and, um, contacted me about the possible raise, and I think it's, it's clear that we do have a responsibility to represent our community. But I feel like my primary responsibility as a school board director is to represent the district and the children who are here to learn. And I think, as Director Williams has mentioned, I think a six point five tax, percent tax increase actually does both. If we don't do this, we're gonna be in the phys, financial ditch within a couple of years, and then we'll have to raise the taxes higher. And I think, um, out of fairness to our community, I think raising that now, and then I don't think there's a trend that would, um, necessitate a continued, uh, max raise as we move forward. So I think over ten years, we're actually doing them a favor, and we're setting the school up for success. And, um, I would just say those who are opposed, who have not taken a tour of the high school, I would highly recommend it. Um, I have video of black water coming out of a sink, um, bathrooms that can't be used. Um, it's, it's pretty deplorable. So I think, I think we owe it to our, our students to offer them a better environment.
Great. Thank you, Director Englund.
Yeah, so, like many of you, I've received some pretty heartbreaking emails from, uh, individuals in our community, and I hope that, um, in talking to Director Naum, we've talked about developing, um, a committee that would look at some ways to provide some uh, direction and some support to those individuals, because I really do believe that there are people that are hurting um, in our community, and I want to know, I want to let them know that I, I hear them. Um, I know that, um, they're hurting. I understand their unfixed incomes, um, with, uh, no opportunity to, um, to, to get some relief. And so, um, you know, my, my hope would be that we would be able to come up with something that would be a benefit, just as we're trying to benefit our students, um, that we would also have an opportunity to to, uh, benefit and, and look out for, for those that are also vulnerable and struggling in our community. Cause the emails have been truly heartbreaking, and I know you've all gotten them as well. Um, I also know that our budget is bare bones, and we're not, um, having extravagant expenses. We're having necessary expenses. We have a, a school that is in disrepair at this point, and we need to make improvements, and we need to, um, you know, I have a, a dear classmate who took a picture in front of the high school and said, yep, looks the same as it did, uh, thirty years ago. That's not okay, and not just from an aesthetic perspective. I'm not talking about aesthetics. Um, I'm talking about need. I mean, you know, I know there's complaints about the, um, you know, the, um, concession stand and, uh, the football stadium, but gosh, what we had before and what we had for a very long time was embarrassing. And I hope that our students and our community have something that they can now be proud of. I certainly am. Um, that we can, um, have a place where we can, um, have events and, um, our students are able, and people are coming to our community and saying, wow, glad I can grab a hot dog or a hamburger or whatever, and we can, our boosters can be, uh, supported and utilize that facility as well. So, um, you know, I, I know that it's, it's a lot, but it's, it's necessary because it's gone un, um, addressed for such a long period of time. And so this is a hard decision because I certainly hear that the community is, is hurting, and I want to, I want to, you know, I want to respond to that. I, I love this community. I love this school. This is the one time of the year on this board where I feel like those two things are, um, at opposing, uh, situations, and how do I support our students? Um, and how do I, um, you know, how do I also support our community? So it's, it's a struggle. Um, I think if, if we can offer a bit of a tax break, um, that would be great, but I'm not sure that it's gonna make a whole lot of difference in our individuals' pockets, but I think it's gonna make a big difference long term, and I feel like long term, we're gonna be able to um, support the community with a bit of an increase now.
Okay. Thank you, Director Murray. Director Klein?
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing about, um, you know, we talk a lot about ten years, ten years foresight. And it's because we voted on taking those bonds. We have a duty to pay that back. Um, we made a commitment. And we look ten years ahead because we look to see what that, how that affects us in the future. Without this foresight, without this passing, without this planning, we would just be kicking the can down the road for future boards to endure. We might not even be here. So that, that's one of the main reasons why it's important to take care of it now. So we're not just passing the buck. I agree with a lot of what you guys said. I think a, a larger increase now is gonna help us for the future. And, uh, that's why I support a six and a half percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Uh, yeah, um, so I think one of the things that we have to do is look at the larger picture of, uh, you know, how the members of our community, there are other things that are funded through property taxes. There's not just a school property tax. There's also county property tax. There's also township taxes that you pay. County passed a pretty substantial property tax for this year as well. Um, theirs was slightly over a hundred dollars. Ours, if it passes, would be, you know, close to two hundred dollars. So you put that together, now we're talking a three hundred dollar increase. Um, and then I don't know what the other specific townships have done, if anybody increased their taxes, but three hundred dollars now to somebody who relies on social security as their main form of income, that's pretty big, you know, even if you break that out over the month. That could be a week's worth of groceries for them. Uh, so I think that's something that we have to consider. I don't think that there's anybody on this board who doesn't understand that we have these bond obligations, that renovations were not desperately needed at the high school. We've committed for that. That's budgeted in there. Um, I think, you know, the thing that we're looking at is we have a fund balance that even after we pay the bond, uh, the bond, make the bond payments and do the cash payment uh, for the high school renovations, um, in a few years, we still are operating with a fund balance. And I just, you know, going to the max tax increase this year, uh, just, you know, it doesn't seem right when there's already other tax increases that are on the table. Um, so, you know, I just, it's something I want, like, the board to consider.
Thank you, Director Kreiser. Director Fowler, Director Moyer.
I'm not changing anybody's mind, so.
Okay, um. Yeah, so, um, I, I spoke at length last month, um, and took plenty of heat for it, but I spoke at length last month, last month, so I'm not gonna belabor the point. Um, I, I appreciate everybody's thoughtful input. I mean, this is, this is a weighty issue. It, it all, it is every year, as, as Director Murray said. I think three main points for, for myself as I, as I consider this, and I, and I think these are, these are important issues. This is the way that I view it. Um, I do view this not just in terms of looking at this year and the impact of taxes this year. I'm looking at the potential impact of taxes next year. Um, I'm looking five years down the road. I'm looking ten years down the road, twenty, thirty years down the road. I think, um, as was stated, we, we have an obligation to serve our community not just in terms of what impacts today, but also what we're looking at down the road. And so that forms the basis of, of my belief about what this, um, what the situation is today. Um, it's been stated, we, we have a conservative budget. Uh, Director Williams, I actually think there's forty-two schools, and I think we're sixteenth of forty-two. We are below the mean. We're below the median, um, and well below, um, the max. Uh, I, I don't think by any stretch of the imagination we have, uh, an exorbitant budget. I, I think, uh, our administration does a fantastic job every year of producing a conservative budget. We have the benefit lately of that conservative budget translating into a little bit of additional money that we have each year. That's a credit to the administration. Um, also, as a credit to the administration, I've heard comments about, um, administrator pay. Uh, Dr. Messinger is gonna be very angry at me for saying this, but, um, when I look at what we are paying our administrators right now, we are so far below our neighboring districts that we are placing ourselves in very significant risk of not retaining or drawing as talented administrators as we currently have. Uh, the superintendent is a fine example. Um, I'm not gonna talk about Gary Sallard right now. But those are factors that I think are really important to this district. Uh, when we look five years down the road, when we look ten years down the road, and we need to be thinking about what it looks like to bring upon, uh, bring in this district talented people like we currently have, we have to be competitive with our neighbors. Um, we already know about the teacher shortage in, in Pennsylvania. We do okay with, with the teacher salaries, um, but that is something we have to look at ten years down the road as well. I, I, I absolutely agree, um, regarding the property tax relief, um, things that we can do to explore that. I do intend to to, to raise that later in this, this evening's meeting. Regarding the fund balance, I, I also thank you, Director Kreiser, for the comments. I think the fund balance is, is a complicated thing, that it has taken, I'm, this is my fifth year on the board. I think I'm finally starting to understand how the fund balance works. It's complicated, and, and I think it's complicated for the public as well. Um, there are comments that we are operating on this massive surplus. The thing with the fund balance, though, is that there are, um, there are components of that fund balance. There's dedicated balance that we have determined is going to be paid for something. Um, what's, what's the correct term? There's the unassigned and the assigned. We have multiple, multiple millions of dollars of our fund balance assigned to future debt service payments. We have to make those payments. That is not a surplus that we can use for anything else. The unassigned balance that we have is minimal, and by state law, it has to reach a certain level. And with the budget that's, uh, uh, that's being proposed, we will comply with that state law. I, I, um, agree with the comments that, you know, that fund balance is there. It is technically in excess. My concern is that if we do not raise taxes at the place that allows us to fund our ongoing liabilities that we've all agreed to, to fund, I won't belabor that, if we don't prepare for the future, we will begin immediately operating at a deficit. That deficit will be drawn from the unassigned fund balance, and then when something comes up and we need to hire, uh, a new superintendent, we need to hire new administrators, um, that's, that's, or, or anything else, any capital project that we have, our budget is going to suffer. I realize that I am, I am going on more, and I, I, I don't mean to do that. I, I also understand, however, that the concern with a, a six point five, or maybe we could go a little lower. Uh, I agree, we could, we could go lower. My concern is that relies on the hope that either the governor's budget is going to be approved with massive influx of, of public school funding, or that, as has been stated, the, the general assembly is going to respond to the Supreme Court and fix the funding formula that is harming districts like Northern Lebanon. Uh, as I learned in my prior career, hope is not a course of action. And as much as I do hope that these things happen within the next few months, and if they do happen in the next few months, this board is gonna be in a position of luxury next year where we can, we, we really may be able to look at, uh, a ta, a, a tax increase, and I've said it before, tax increases are part of the reality. We may be able to look at something extremely low next year if, if our hope is fulfilled. But hope is not a course of action, and as far as I'm concerned, it falls upon us to do the right thing, the fiduciary thing for a district and for um, our taxpayers. And I, I, I do believe this is the right thing to do. I believe it's the right thing to do, as hard as it is today. It's the right thing to do for five years down the road. It's the right thing to do for ten years and twenty years and even thirty years down the road. Because our conservative budget by doing this now, we are setting the district up to maintain a conserv, a conservative but competitive budget going forward. And, and that's, uh, that's, that's my point of view based on those, those things. Um, the last thing I want to say is, uh, you know, I try to, uh, respond to the public when they reach out to me. Um, I appreciate the, the good conversations that I've been able to have. The other thing that I would like to say, and this is a challenge not only to this board, but also, I, I think to our public as well, with the passion that this issue has sparked and directed towards us, which is completely appropriate, absolutely a hundred percent appropriate, with the passion that's, that's been directed to us, I hope that we as a community are willing to take that passion to our, uh, elected officials in Harrisburg. Because until charter school is, is reformed, until a budget is passed with significant public school funding, and until the, the, the funding formula is addressed, we're gonna be having this conversation for the next twenty, thirty years. And, and, and I think what we're able to do today sort of eliminates some of, some of that risk of that conversation, but until those things happen, we're gonna be stuck in the same situation of piling property tax on property tax, on property tax, that, that other agencies have already done. And, uh, it, it, it falls on Harrisburg to fix that problem, and I, I don't like passing the buck, but that's just the reality. So I, I hope that our board will take that passion to try to pursue advocacy and, and, and develop some of that change, but I also hope that our, our community will also reach out with the same passion that they've reached out to us, and, and I, I, I love this community. I've been a part of it for, you know, eighteen years. Love this community. Um, I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't love this community and, and this district, um, but, um, I'll end there. I, I didn't, I didn't plan to talk for ten minutes, um, but give a lawyer a microphone. There's only eight. Okay, um. Eight, okay, thanks. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, we have discussion from the board. Uh, Mrs. Martin, I would like to take a roll call vote on item nine point two A. This is the budget that was tentatively approved in our June board meeting.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Blau?
No.
Murray?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Englund?
Yes.
Naum?
Yes.
Fraser? Moyer?
No.
There'd be six yes and three no.
Great, thank you, and, and I do appreciate the conversation and the discussion that everyone's had. Okay, with that, uh, we, we do have, uh, uh, an approved motion to separate from the vote, uh, the second item that I've labeled as item nine point two B, and that is the uh, establishing, it's, it's more or less eliminating the, the per capita tax for this year, uh, setting it at zero point zero zero. Is there a motion to adopt item nine point two B?
Motion.
Great, thank you, Director Kreiser. Is there a second? Great, thank you, Director Murray. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving item nine point two B, please indicate with an "yes."
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Nine point three, this is the Homestead-Farmstead exclusions.
Kind, this comes up with the budget every year.
Yes, so this is money that is given to us from the state, and we are to pass it along to their property owners as a relief. So this is the resolution that would be passing on. So this is the resolution that would be passing on all of those dollars to our homeowners who have filed for the Homestead-Farmstead exclusion, and it gives them relief in the amount of $209, and it reduces their assessed value of their homes by $12,090.
And that was an increase, correct?
Yes, we had an increase in money from the state, so we obviously passed all of that on to the homeowners.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions regarding 9.3? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve 9.3? Thank you, Director England. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Director Williams. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving 9.3, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so that motion carries unanimously. We'll move now to the fund balance, which we've already discussed a little bit this evening.
That's you.
Okay, so in front of you, you will see the resolution that moves money into the assigned. There is none going into the committed fund this year, which is fully reserved for healthcare, soft insurance costs. We have that at about $950,000 after interest. That'll be where we're at for the year ending, 23, 24, June 30. And moving into the assigned would be the money basically from the sale of Fredericksburg and Jonestown. And then also, there's another sentence there that is moving, we are scheduled to settle on East Hanover and Lickdale, June 26. That would be moving the funds. The sales price total, 4.4, we'll be receiving less than that after some fees, and everything's prorated and taken out of that. That would be moving those monies as well into the assigned fund balance. And the estimated amount, once we have interest and the sales from those four buildings, plus what we had moved into there in prior years, would be approximately $9 million into that assigned fund balance.
Thank you. Questions?
That assigned fund balance then would basically go to pay for the renovations to the secondary building.
Yes, roughly $5.5 to $6 million is what we are estimating. We will need to finish out just what we will owe contractors for the new construction. So that will be used for the remaining of the construction. We do not have enough bond money to cover what we've committed to the contractors for that project.
Further questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve 9.4, please?
Motion to approve 9.4.
Great, thank you. Is there a second, Director Williams? Use a second. Great. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving 9.4, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so that motion carries unanimously. 9.5, primary financial institutions, something we do every year. Dr. Messinger?
Sorry. That's Leanne as well.
Yes, so this is something new for this year. I know Barry just said we do this every year, but we do have primary financial institutions, but what we're, no, that's completely okay. What we're proposing is to move that we have just one that does almost all of our financial institutions for us. It's usually a list. And what this motion is doing is for First Citizens Community Bank, they are a local, they have a branch in Fredericksburg that's close to us. Their customer service has been outstanding to the district over the years. They have set themselves ahead with waiving fees, giving us things to help us out. As, we use a lot of bank bags. This may seem odd, but the little plastic things, little plastic bags that zip shut, some cloth ones with zippers on, and we tend to go through those quickly with how much we use them and pass them around for cafeteria money, field trips, everything. They have been very accommodating to us, and they also, like I said, don't have any fees that some of the competitors that we're using have. So we've been very happy with their customer service. They have given us competitive interest rates, and they have repeatedly come to us with those rates to offer them to us, rather than me having to go out and ask them. So we have made the decision to make them our primary financial institution, move a lot over to them, because right now we are juggling our three main banks, or Jonestown, Fulton, and, I call it Fredericksburg, but it's First Citizens Community Bank. And what we're ending up doing is moving money back and forth a lot, because we need to pay somebody out here. This will just put it all together, keep our interest rates competitive, and with the higher amounts, we will get more competitive interest rates. We still use Pliget for our investing, but this will just kind of streamline things and give us some great customer service and avoiding some fees.
Great, thank you, and I'm sorry for misleading. I will stop talking at this point. Thank you, Leanne. Any other questions?
Sorry, one more thing. I do have their proposal here. I just have one copy, though, if anyone wants to see it before the end of the night. I had another one, and I accidentally ran over it with my office chair. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve 9.6? Thank you, Zers. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 9.5, I apologize. 9.5, motion from Director England to approve 9.5. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, thank you, Director Murray. Is there any discussion?
Well, I just have one question now that I'm looking at this here. It says that this fixed rate structure is good till December of '24. So what's the feasibility of these things, of any of these things, changing for the second half of the school year?
Right, it's the winter, it's December 31st. But, yeah, so the rates do fluctuate on the market a lot, and we will meet with them. And like I said, all of our rates are fluctuating, with many of the banks are fluctuating every other week, every month. They have locked these ones in that they proposed here for six months, until December, and then we'll meet again and renegotiate the rates and go from there. But the market on rates constantly changing with checkings and savings accounts. Pliget, we've got some locked in on treasury terms there. They tend to be almost competitive with what we can get through them. And like, if they are not as competitive, we can move back and forth between Pliget, depending on what's going on in their market.
So it's just the interest rate schedule, not the fee schedule that would change potentially?
Correct. The fee schedule is there as listed. Like I said, there's, yes. Do you see they have waived a lot? I can tell you that another financial institution is, we are being hit with like $1,000 fees. So it's not like we get small fees for these things. We're doing wires, which a lot of times are costly. We do ACHs too, and when we are paying our bond payments, they're larger wires, ACHs, so they, you know, the fees go based on that. So this was very competitive, and they waived a lot of the fee schedule for us, which was the most attractive thing for us.
I just had one quick thought. Is there any disadvantage to having one bank versus three? I mean, here, like, sometimes banks go under. Is there any disadvantage of having all our money in one place?
So they are backed, and they, you know, we have, we're only allowed to invest in certain things within, it has to be safer for governmental and local institutions. We do still use Pliget for investing, and we all have them as well. No, a lot of schools are doing this. I can tell you right now that Alco is in talks with them as well. So it's just streamlining it and trying to avoid the fees.
I mean, I see the positives. I was just wondering if there's any negatives to there as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving item 9.5, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. My vote is a yes as well. Now we'll move to 9.6.
Yes, just our school year proposal for our school dentist. Not very exciting.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve 9.6?
Motion to approve 9.6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving 9.6, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. 9.7, student service agreements.
Yes, after the IU's budget is approved, we wind up getting all these agreements every year. That's their list of all the agreements that we have with them at this time. The, a lot of those are services they provide our students that are in their placements. Kelly, is there anything else you wanted me to add to that? Okay. If there's questions, Kelly's here to answer them.
Okay, any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve 9.7? Thank you.
Motion to approve 9.7.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving item 9.7, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, no buildings and grounds for this month, correct?
No.
And we will move then to extracurricular.
11.1 is trips. There's a list of quite a few. We have our senior trip on there. We have our art club trip to the Metropolitan Art Museum of New York City. We have our freshman class trip, and then three camps that our, that our coaches go to over the summer.
Okay, any questions on 11.1? Okay, if there are no questions, I think what we'll do then is we'll go down to 11.2. If we can vote on these as a block, if not, we'll separate them.
Yeah. 11.2 is our assistant coaches. We've already approved our head coaches, but our list of assistants, including our volunteers, are listed for those upcoming fall sports. 11.3 is our class advisors, grade seven class advisor, grade eight class advisor. And then 11.4 is our annual list of all of our clubs and co-curriculars and the advisors that will be doing those clubs.
Great, thank you. Any questions on any of these items? Okay, hearing none, then I will receive a motion to approve items 11.1 through 11.4.
Motion to approve 11.1 through 11.4.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Director England. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving items 11.1 through 11.4, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes. Motion carries unanimously, and we'll move to curriculum.
12.1, there are two policies that were parked on for approval, home education programs, and then the extracurricular activity, inter-scholastic athletic participation for home education students. And 12.2 is that lengthy list of curriculum. You're seeing the, you're seeing curriculum now in the five-year cycle that was set up before, and each year, its departments go through. I'm not gonna, I don't think that every single time they will redo every single curriculum. However, in order to get it from the old format to the new format, they have redone almost all of them when their time has come. There are some formatting issues we wind up having when we go from Google Docs to Word to PDFs, and we will clean some of that up before it goes on to the public site, but that's just formatting things. The rest of that is there for your approval.
Okay. Questions for Dr. Messinger?
For the homeschooling policies, it's correct, if you're homeschooling, you're still paying taxes towards, the money's still coming towards our district as opposed to like a charter school. So I've just, I didn't have a whole lot of time to go through this. I don't know if we wanted to make it more of a discussion as far as we want to be homeschool friendly, so I don't know if there's, I didn't have enough time to look at everything and see, and talk to homeschool families and see if this is...
I think in general, too, I mean, we've always been, there's different approaches that districts can take, and there's different philosophies on it. The state has changed a few things for districts. For instance, now, now school districts must allow homeschool students to take a certain percentage of their courses. You remember that percentage off the top of your head? 25.
Thank you.
Things like that, that we had to reflect those changes in our policies, and that's really why we did them. We already have homeschool students that participate in our athletics. We already have had homeschool participate in our musical programs and things like that.
They can participate in extracurricular?
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Does this policy only apply to homeschool students, or are we also talking about charter school students? Strictly homeschool?
Just home education.
Okay.
Any other questions?
One other, as far as the other curriculum, 12.2, you had mentioned like we have that German book out there to look at. Is there more opportunities to see some of, like, if they use a book, if the teacher uses online? I know we saw like a lot of like syllabuses, like this is what we're teaching, but it would be nice to see more what the teacher is actually showing the kids, or...
If they're adopting, anytime they adopt a new textbook, we'll say, which would be, whether that's an electronic textbook through Schoology, or it would be a hard copy, then we, then those are up for public view. If they're not adopting a new textbook, then they can be viewed at any time by request, but we don't typically, on an annual basis, like, rotate them in any way. I don't know what percentage even of our books anymore are textbook versus electronic. I can find out, but if they're not changing, we don't typically have a, we haven't had a procedure to put them up for view.
Okay, so what exactly are we voting on here, then, I guess?
Well, they're taking the state standards and/or if there's no state standards, the national standards, and they're utilizing that information to develop their curriculum as a guide for writing their lesson plans and then delivering the instruction.
More the lesson plan?
It's not even that detailed. You know, students will, I can think of one off the top of my head. There were like three types of standing that need to be learned in the woodshop class. So it talks about that they will, they will learn how to, they will, they will, we will introduce them to this, this, and this, and we will assess them by having them perform it on a project, like, those types of things. The actual lesson plan adds more detail to it, but this is more kind of the, these are the topics that are being discussed.
Good question. All right, any other questions? Okay, is there, is there a desire by the board to separate any of these issues, or can we vote on 12.1 and 12.2 together? Okay, I'm getting a lot of head nods. Okay, so is there a motion to approve 12.1 and 12.2?
Motion to approve 12.1 and 12.2.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, I would just like to say, the curriculum, when I came onto the board, this is exactly the stuff that I was looking forward to seeing, and I recognize that this represents a whole lot of work from the teachers and from the departments, and really appreciative of it and the detail that it's provided.
I think we have some improvements coming with it, too. We've talked, I talked before, two months ago, when I gave my presentation about the word clarity, and we've done a lot of research, kind of put Melissa on it, too, to help us. Now she's spending a little bit of money buying books for me to read, but it's really the work from John Almerod, and gonna, we're going to be using some of those concepts to help bring some clarity to the curriculum and the way we write it, because it's a little complicated at times when you look at it. And then having a more, a bridge, a better bridge between the curriculum and the lesson planning, so the teachers are really focused on what they consider, or what the state considers to be the important skills that students need to learn in those subjects. So we're excited about working on that over the summer and implementing it for next year.
Great, thank you. Oh, and one last thing I did want to say to Director Blau. We homeschooled in this district, and this is, has been a very homeschool-friendly district. So just to echo what Dr. Messinger said, this is primarily to bring our policy in line with the changes in law. But just as a reminder to everyone, we can look at this policy anytime. So if there's a desire from anyone, we can, we can look at the policies again, so.
And since you brought it up, I believe we are at the minimum for charter school kids. The state has certain minimums. We're at the minimum. I don't believe we've given any extra courtesies.
Okay, all in favor of approving items 12.1 and 12.2, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so the motion carries unanimously. We'll move to personnel.
I'll split this up into two. 13.1 is employment. It's just that time of year where we have positions that are available. You're gonna see the science teacher, a science teacher, and now we are fully staffed in the science department, and elementary teacher, some substitutes that were re-designated for elementary positions. We have, this is Nom on there, for a part-time paraprofessional, which is a re-designation. We had a retirement in the maintenance department. We were able to replace that. Re-designation to the Building Response Support Secretary, and a re-designation to that Special Education Consultant. We are, we have four current open positions. We've been interviewing, I think we have interviews set up or have conducted first rounds on all those positions. Mrs. Bruce is at a graduation function tonight, but she has done a great job of getting us a really good place for this time of year. We did have a resignation for retirement in the business office. Our accounts payable person is retiring. We have our list of mentors for some of these new folks for the '24, '25 school year, and then we have a couple... and then we have a couple of people that are retiring that are going on the sublists, one of them being two people down. So we have her penciled in for every board meeting in twenty, four, twenty-five. I'll stop there.
All right, are there any questions on thirteen point one and thirteen point two? Okay, is there a motion to adopt thirteen point one, thirteen point two?
Motion to adopt.
Director Blau spoke first, so, okay. I'll count you, Director Murray is the second.
Sure.
Okay, any discussion? I would note that I am abstaining from thirteen point one E. We'll be voting on the rest of them. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving thirteen point one and thirteen point two, please indicate with an I or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. I am also a yes, except for thirteen point one E, on which I abstain. And with that, the motion carries unanimously for all but thirteen point one E. That is an eight to zero to one vote. Okay, thirteen point three, and I'll just finish.
Yeah, the last, last part of thirteen, the substitute rates, which I had sent an email about, just increasing each of the substitute positions five dollars a day. We're still a little behind the eight ball there around the county, but it's a step in the right direction. The two increases that we talked about in exec session, the Act ninety-three at three and a half, and the classified salary overall of four percent with no one less than three and a half.
Any questions on those items? Okay, is there a motion to adopt thirteen point three through thirteen point seven?
Motion to adopt thirteen point three through thirteen point seven.
Thank you, Director Williams. Is there a second? Thank you, Director England. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving thirteen point three through thirteen point seven, please indicate with an I or yes.
Aye.
Any, okay, thirteen point five, okay, great. Any opposed?
Thirteen point seven, under the general education aid, library aid assistance, paraprofessional, I do believe those rates need to be a little higher, so I will. The rest I accept, but those three, I think they, they need to start to be a little higher.
And we can certainly, let me write down the category. We can certainly look at that. Those are things that we, we try to talk about. We get a report from the county that has school districts across the county that we can, that we try to look at the rates and get a good, and there's a little more to that story that would have to be an exact discussion just based on where we, we've been as a district. But we can certainly, that's something we can keep an eye on, particularly these new rates come in for our, what they call our yellow book for the IU. All the districts report the wages.
Okay, so just as a point of order, Director Moyer, so on thirteen point seven, your vote is a no?
Yes to all, except for those three that I mentioned that.
Okay.
No, for, as far as increase of rates.
The minutes will reflect that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any opposed other than what Director Moyer has said to those? And abstention, Director England on thirteen point five. So thirteen point one through thirteen point four carry unanimously. Thirteen point five is an eight to zero to one, and then thirteen point six is a nine point zero. Thirteen point seven is unanimous with the exception of those two positions identified by Director Moyer. Okay, thank you. Information items.
Commensurate, which we talked about. The state tax equalization letter from, is included for you guys, and Director Fowler.
This is exciting. We actually had a change order meeting where we did approve the twenty-four thousand. It's fourteen point one C, where we approved the twenty-four thousand four hundred seventy-three, but it actually came with a reimbursement of twenty-seven thousand two sixty-one, so we saved about twenty-five hundred dollars to not move stuff.
Well done by your committee. Thank you.
It's amazing.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. No, that is good. It is good. Okay, we'll move to reports. CTC Director Klein?
You know what? I'm gonna save my report for our next meeting in August.
Sounds good. Okay, yep. IU thirteen, Director Marie?
No report this month.
Okay, legislative liaison, Director Kreiser?
So actually, two things to report. The, a school voucher program that was proposed by the legislator would actually not have any impact on public school money. It would come straight out of the State Department of Treasury and created through that. So I thought that was an interesting take on, on funding school vouchers. I know that's something that a lot of people would like to see, and that would create basically a scholarship program that would be funded out of the Department of Treasury, would not have any impact on public school funding. And then the other item, actually kind of hot off the press from this afternoon, is that the state educational committee took a preliminary vote on the budget, the governor's proposed educational budget increases. And so they approved one billion dollars for next year's funding, and then a five billion dollars increase that would go to those school districts that are, are, you know, at the disadvantage in the current formula over the next seven years. And that would also include some property tax relief for certain school districts. I don't know if that would include our district or not, but.
Just making sure.
It's, it's looking promising. So that was the committee vote today. It'll go to the full house next, next week. It's scheduled for debate, and they could actually take a vote on it next week.
Excellent. Great report. Thank you. That is, that is very good news. Thank you. PSBA liaison, Director Blau?
There's one interesting thing that I found. One of these, a school district has something called a communication board for non-verbal, I'm assuming like maybe autistic children or children who have English as a second language. They have on their playground like this board that has like more pictures that they can point if they're not communicating either in that language or they're just non-verbal. It was just an interesting way of having the children communicate to each other.
Okay, great, thank you. Question, Director Kreiser, do we know when that is going to vote, or if, if you have any idea? I don't know.
They said next Wednesday is the debate, is when the debate is tentatively scheduled, and then they could go to the full house vote after that.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
I also have a quick question for Shen. Was anything said about the charter school funding?
Yes, that is part of that, that package that was.
Do we know what amount? Did they approve the, what the governor proposed, or are they proposing a different amount?
The article I read did not say, but the proposed amount before was to cap it at eight thousand dollars.
Right, yeah, right. Okay, great. Okay, thank you. That's, that's excellent. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, new business. I would like to, to gauge the interest of the board on two items of potential new business. One of them may be moot now, which I'm very thankful for, but the, the first item of new business, I, I wanted to gauge the, the board on whether there might be interest in us supporting a resolution that would go to the General Assembly promoting adoption of a, of an aggressive school funding budget, charter school reform, something like that, that we could, we could work on and adopt a resolution. Obviously, if the vote is coming up in, in three weeks, that's gonna happen before our next meeting, but if, if that's something that the board is interested in, I, I would take a crack working with Shen on, on a resolution. I've seen, and, and Dr. Messinger has shared with me a, a couple of resolutions that other school districts have done. Now, now some of those resolutions are more of a political nature. They support the governor. I think ours would want to be something that we would want to craft that is representative of our district and, and our interest in that, but is there a general interest in us proceeding with that? If so, is there any issue with, with Director Kreiser and I sort of working on something to that level? Okay, anyone else want to join in that? If so, we may have to form a committee, but let me know. Email me tomorrow or in the, in the coming days, and I, I think that would be a good way for us to take that step of advocacy that, that we're talking about. And then the second one, Director Murray did mention this. I'm interested in forming a board committee that will explore opportunities that we can do as a board for property tax relief. Now, one of the things that I've been doing is directing folks to the State Department of Revenue's state property tax relief program, which is available to seniors within, within our district, but I'd also propose forming a committee where we can look at that. Is there any opposition to a committee of that nature, general broad support for us to take a look at some steps that we might be able to take? Okay, with that then, I will, I'm not gonna do it tonight, but I will form a committee. Again, if you're interested in being a part of that committee, please email me and let me know, so that I can form that committee, so that we can be taking a look at legal steps. We're gonna have to incorporate, obviously, Leanne or someone from the business office, and we confer with our solicitor as well on anything that we do, but I think that's a reasonable step and something that I've heard fairly unanimously from this board and from the community. Okay, any other new business?
I have a, not much of a new business, but I just want to congratulate the seniors, so can I make a little statement?
Sure, please do, absolutely.
Congratulations to the class of two thousand twenty-four. A new chapter of life will be, begin. Majority of you will be heading to college, trade school, military, or entering the workforce. Continue to do your best, achieve your dream goals, and make difference to people's lives. Remember, each and every one of us will face with daily struggles, anxiety, depression, and hardship. Don't be afraid to ask for help, especially God, who is fighting for us every minute of every day. Continue to work hard and strive for the best in everything you do. Best of luck, and God bless.
Thank you. Well stated. Okay, dates to remember. We'll see everybody tomorrow night. Look forward to that, especially in my house, so. With that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Motion.
Motion. Okay, we got a motion from Director William, Williams, and a, who, who was the second? Was it Director Moore? All in favor, please indicate with an I or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.